Well, good afternoon. Looks like right at the moment you have me here. We have Commissioner Rader online. Trying to locate Commissioner Farrell, I'm gonna lose around. We lost him. We are gonna go a little bit of order today. I know Gina had something, so we'll, we'll, we'll cover that first and then we'll go into Public Works.
Okay. Good afternoon. Gina James, Health and Human Services. Thanks for letting me jump, jump in line. Really quickly, I wanted to touch base with the board about the grant that we have called the Consolidated Homeless Grant. We go through this process every two years. We have a first step in this process that's, that is coming up where we complete some basic information about Calitz County, who signs contracts, how we manage the funds and things like that. There's a page, it's a certification page that asks for Chairman Dahl's signature on it to submit with that as sort of the first step in this process. So that's the sort of the phase we're at right now. We typically at this point would see a budget as well, but the state is holding off on that until they're done with the legislative session. So we won't see a budget until probably after the end of the legislative session. Then we'll do a second phase of this process where they'll send the budget and we'll have information about what that looks like at that point. And then they'll send a contract. So we're sort of kind of a multi-step process here that we go through every two years for this contract. This one is, this contract includes the HEN funding. It's a combination of state funds as well as document recording fees that when, when we collect document recording fees, we keep a portion that we administer locally and then a portion goes to the state and then returns to us in this grant. So it's a combination of that funding from document recording fees and some state funding for the HEN work. We, so we utilize some of this contract for not only the HEN program, but we are also able to, we've been using it for our coordinated entry contracts as well as some others with document recording fees. We can also bill some of our time to it that we spend doing work with our task force, our local five-year plan, our doing the point in time count, things like that. We're able to bill our time to this contract for those types of activities. So today, like I mentioned, we just have this first phase where we submit some basic information. There's a certification page for chairman's signature on it. That's what we're looking for today and then we'll have much more to learn about what the budget will look like and a contract later on in the year.
So this, this first basically tell, it tells the state that we're interested in participating again? Is that, is that fairly accurate way to describe it? What, what was the budget two years ago? Do you know offhand?
I do. Actually, I was looking at it because our current contract included, the one we have right now included some one-time additional funding. That's really inflated. And so when I looked at the previous two-year contract, it's about 4.5 million for the two-year period.
And is it another one of those reimbursement contracts that they're giving this line of credit if we don't spend it all, then it we just don't spend it all?
Correct. It just stays at the state. Sometimes they'll ask to do an amendment and take some of that funding out of our contract, but it doesn't always happen. So.
Okay. Commissioner Rader, you have questions on that?
Just a quick question, Gina. This is because of my insurance background, but when we asked to be reimbursed, do we get 100% reimbursement rate from the state or is it like 40%, 50%? Is it 100% reimbursement?
Yeah, it's based on our actual cost for the allowable activities. So it is 100% of our actual cost that's allowable to be reimbursed through this grant.
Okay.
So we have any, any concerns with start, starting the process? I don't, I think we're okay with that?
Okay. Great. I'll have, I'll get the signature page sent over. We can get that signed and back. Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Public Works? I thought I might, as you're, you're coming up, preface this a little bit. I had, I did spend some, a little bit with Commissioner Farrell's kind of, but I wanna bring Commissioner Rader kind of up, up to speed. We've been through a, I'll try not be too long-winded, but I think you kind of need to know a little bit of history. We've worked on it involves issues around private roads and then just some backlog of work. And the private roads issue comes up. We're not talking public roads. We're talking private roads and we've worked a couple of years to help alleviate some of the things that the community BPAC saw. They had a a document that asks for a lot. It went to our attorney and our attorney, attorney basically said, I may be paraphrasing just a hair, but basically our, the way our ordinance is set up that we can't do what they're, they're asking without you'd have to dive into ordinance and make some changes there. But what we were able to change was we added this class D road and it, it works for small developers, people working with mom and pops or, or working with a family that maybe wants to build a couple houses for the small things. They're telling us it solves like 75% or higher of the issues they run into. So they think this first step is a good one. We have some people on BPAC that aren't satisfied with that and they want more and they're, but they're larger developer type folks and it's not that we don't wanna. So we're trying to figure out how to, how to, how to best work on that because we have vacancies in employment over at Public Works that has created a backlog and, and Susan's gonna kind of explain how to, how we're gonna address that a little bit. And then we have these issues with these people wanting the, the public road. So I've had discussions with Public Works. I've had discussions with building and planning and we're gonna look at the road and I don't know if we'll get there. I'm trying to be very cautious here because I don't want to give people that all this is gonna happen is that we may look at the idea, strongly look at the idea of pulling private roads out of Public Works, put it in over in building and planning with resources that would be needed that they could handle that and keep those, those, those separate. And then you would additionally, you would have to start working with our ordinance to incorporate some of the changes that were asked for that a lot of people agreed on and I think can be done to help that, but it's not, it's not a process that's gonna be 30 days down the road or 60 days down the road. It just doesn't happen that quick when you're dealing with ordinance. So that's just kind of laying out a vision we have and I want the other commissioners to just kind of see the vision we have and, and will, will that be the way it goes? I, I don't know because we, we still have a lot of I's, a dot and T's to cross before we come back and, and offer a, a, a concrete road to travel. The other, the other part is we get, we're getting some backlog over at Public Works. We, we acknowledge that. We've lost some people over there. So we had a conversation the other day and, and Commissioner Rader doesn't see this because he's not here, but they've developed a spreadsheet and I don't want to get too far into it. They develop a spreadsheet that will come to us. I think on a bi-weekly basis and we'll just get updated so we'll know where projects are. And I, I told them we would look at, I want them to do some research first, but I went back to my mortgage days where I would have a loan officer and I'd have a processor and the loan officer was basically, you know, they would do the, the overview and, and tell you, yeah, we're gonna do this. This is what I need. And the processor was more than nuts and bolts. Person puts the pieces together. So the loan officer or the, or in this case, our engineer isn't stuck in nuts and bolts all day that, that they're able to review and sign off and move forward. So we may look at the possibility of would it make sense? Would it, would it make possible to kind of give her a person that just works at the, the detail person that does that. So that's just a brief kind of where we're at today and I, I ask them to come in and just kind of describe a little bit what they have. And I think in a couple of weeks, we don't have a meeting next week. I think a couple of weeks there may be more detail, but I'm just trying to bring you guys up to speed of conversations I've had. Did I miss anything in what we've talked about? I think the other thing that, that came out and, and I haven't talked to Public Works about that, this, but I know it's important because by the end of 2026, we have to have a new comp plan and a big part of that is transportation plan. So I think that needs to be something we look at every couple of weeks. If, if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna ship it out either way, I think we need to keep an eye on where we're at on that. That's the only thing I would add from the, what we met last time. Anything you want to add? Did I cover stuff or?
Chair, that, that coincides with my conversation that I had, excuse me, with Susan in the past. We talked about the difference between We talked about the difference between working on your department and in your department and the vacancy that she's got, you know, she's expressed that she's not able to, to do the things that she needs to be doing. Like you said, the engineers don't need to be, or the, the, working on the nuts and the bolts type of a thing. So I, I agree with what you're saying and, and hopefully in the future, we can get her some help to get that situation rectified and, and provide the service that we, that we need to provide to the citizens. So I'm with you on that.
Okay. Our, our, our plan is, or my plan is BPAC has been stuck on these private roads since I came on board. I mean, it really has. And about every meeting is on private roads. And my hope is we'll have something a little bit concrete that I can say to them, hey, these, this is where we're going. And this is what's going to take on, on our part. Let's move off private roads and start looking at some other, other things instead of just spinning our wheels every, is it every month? Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's the goal, gentlemen. That's, that, that's the start anyways.
So on this spreadsheet, can you walk me through a little bit? Like when I'm looking at, there's a one in here from 23 even. But where it says revisions required, is that on our part or on the applicant's part?
Okay. So I haven't started going through this, so you're not behind the game yet.
Oh, I see.
Uh, so this.
Good enough.
Yeah. No, that's okay. So this is something that I've been working on because for me in Public Works, Acela is not user-friendly. So I am trying to, and I'm working on, with one of my staff members on tweaking this. So it's very, much more usable for us and making it available for building and planning and that we're updating it and you guys can see it. So what I've done is Tracy sent me an email with what they considered in Public Works review. I guess it was a week and a half, two weeks ago. So I took that spreadsheet and I hid some of the columns because they didn't mean anything to me. And I sorted them by project type. So each grouping is a different project type. And then I color-coded them and the color codes on the last page where the green are approved projects. So the next time that this spreadsheet is updated, it wouldn't be on there again. The peach color is a waiting on a developer response. And then the pink color, it makes our list look long and it makes us go, what are we missing? Are things that are usually handled through a different process? So for building and planning, they put them in Acela, but they're not something that's passed back and forth between Public Works and Acela. They're, they call them inter-agency reviews, they're CIPAs and they're short plats. So although they show up as Public Works review, they're not something that we address in Acela. So my plan moving forward to help keep me out of the weeds. So one of our staff members currently, she addresses all of the residential, single-family homes, all the manufacturing homes. And so she's in Acela besides myself, she's the other person in Public Works that gets into Acela. So she goes through and she reviews and approves those. Inter-agency reviews, she currently is the one who writes them up. We have a template set up and she brings them to me. I flip through, okay, there's nothing weird. Her comments are the ones we agreed off and I just sign on the memo. So my hope moving forward is I'm working on developing templates like that for the CIPA reviews. So if it's a forest conversion or something with the private road, she'll have a template that she can go, okay, this is a forest conversion. Standard Public Works comment is XYZ. Get the memo written up and run it across my desk. She will also go through and flag anything that's unusual. We have a couple bigger CIPAs coming through that are industrial commercial. So when those come up, she'll flag them and bring them to my attention. This has a due date of XYZ. This isn't something I can handle. And we're hoping, and then the other things that I'll still be looking at and hoping to ship more of them out to a consultant are the commercial and large or an industrial permit that requires a stormwater review. Because that is not something she can currently do. Same with private roads. Those are things that I will either be shipping out to a consultant that we have on contract or if it's something that's been going back and forth, I will finish the review on.
So educate me, what is Acela?
So Acela is building and planning's permit system. So if you want to build a house, you will submit it through this computer portal permitting system.
Go ahead.
And so when you submit it, it gets parsed out for, depending on what it is, it'll get labeled as a type of project and it'll be sent out to everybody who needs to review it as a workflow. And then the workflow waits for everybody to comment and/or approve depending on the project.
Okay. Also on your color key, you've got the three colors, but a lot of these are white. There's no.
Okay. So I guess I need to color code white. White is the one that are, are in Public Works actively working on. So for example, the top three, which are all 303 Hazel Street, are projects that everything is in the inbox. It's for me to review. Some of these dates I was going to play with because some of them can be deceiving, like the assigned date, 12/28/2023. That is the first time that they submitted it. It's not when the application was complete. So that was why that assigned date was a column I think I was going to hide and have them updated as to when the documents are in there.
Okay.
And that will still give you a, you'll still have an idea of how old the record is. Because if you look at the number, the record ID number, the way building and planning does the record numbers. So 24 is the year it came in. So the first two digits, year it came in, second two digits, month it came in. And then it's just a, I'm guessing a straight sequence of numbers.
Second two digits are what?
The month. So.
Okay. Excuse me. So then in the fourth, the last four digits?
Or just the sequence of number that they're on.
Okay.
Susan, is there some sort of reasonable expectation as far as the timeframe goes with these things? I know that I, I've spoken with Tracy about timeframe expectations and Commissioner Dolls working on a, on a proposal, or I'm sorry, on a, on his deal as far as the, the timeframe for the, the permits. Do we have an expect, an, an expected timeframe when things come into your office? As to from the time they're finished or the application is complete, for the time we have a response back to them?
So we do try and review them in a timely fashion. Generally, first review, if it's a big project, we're looking at six weeks, six to eight weeks. Second review, depending on how many comments they had, can anywhere, be anywhere from two to four. And if it's a, you had a very minor change, send it in for signature. That's usually a couple of days. For the larger projects, for the single-family homes, the person who reviews them in the office generally reviews everything, if not the day it comes in, then the day following. Because single-family homes for Public Works, general comment is, depending where your house is, you need to come get a driveway access permit. And if you're in the urbanized area, you need to do a stormwater form. Now the Sarah who does our stormwater is very willing and does it frequently. She will stand at the counter and walk somebody through the whole process. And once she has those completed forms, it's generally a two-day turnaround. Driveway access permits, so they need to come into Public Works, fill out the form, get a couple stakes. They put the stakes in the field and they call the office and say, I've staked out my driveway. We will then send an inspector out and they will either approve that location or deny it with comments. And they work with the property owners on, well, you can't have it here because you can only see 20 feet down the road. That is really an exaggeration, but you can only see 20 feet down the road. So it needs to move for public safety. And those are generally turned around, also depending on the season, on how busy the inspectors are. It can be turned around anywhere from the day that they make the call to a week later. We try and keep those moving. All Public Works permits are free. We don't charge for stormwater. We don't charge for access permits.
How many of the projects on this spreadsheet would be affected by Governor Ferguson's proposed permit timeframe plan that he put out?
I don't know. I have not seen that.
Every one of them? Okay.
That'd be the same for stuff in your office? Sorry.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, the, for your benefit, that the governor's letter basically was a proposal that detailed if you don't issue a permit in X amount of time, they get their money back for the permit. So I don't know how, I don't know how the, once they apply for a permit and if they have to make revisions, I don't know how that timeframe would work. It's something that has to go back and forth and back and forth. So. Tracy's got the answer. Oh.
You have a thought or two maybe?
At least more informed. Good afternoon, Commissioners Tracy Jackson. So on something that would go back and forth, my thoughts on that is if we put it on hold and stop the clock, then those days do not count against us. But we are a fee-for-service department, so anything that comes in pays for the employees downstairs. So all but a few percentages of a few staff. So it does matter. It matters a lot. So every one of these would count against us and we'd have to refund the money.
Okay.
Not the latest ones, not the, the last probably five, but everything above that, it would have counted against us.
Would it be unreasonable to have like a, a column for the days it's been outstanding? We just kind of monitor it?
And we do. We get a lot of the applicant, applicants, they call, they come in, they want to know where their permit is. And then right now we have them on hold for Public Works review because we're stopping the clock on our end. And really in a sense.
Well, you can't do anything until you get that back.
Right. Right. So it's just kind of, everything's on hold. Yeah. But it does stop the clock on our end.
Does the car, does the clock start when the application is complete Tracy or when you receive it?
The House bill that was spoke about is when the application is complete. And that is what we currently do not do. We will take in what, they submit everything online to us. We don't generally, we can't stop what they submit to us, even if it's in the city limits or whatever. I mean, they, they can submit anything they want to us online through our Acela permit program. So it's when we get in, you know, when the application comes in, we see what it needs and then we can work with the applicant. And that's when, that's what the counter staff really is great with is that they work with the applicants and they, they do kind of the wraparound services. Hey, we've got, we received this, but we still need this. And then they'll ship, you know, email them out what they need and then they submit it back in. So with that new House bill or with that timeline, we will have to kind of like stop the permits at the counter and stop them from being determined complete until we get everything and then we can process their application. Because it's going to be, it's a different way of thinking. So I'm really curious what your resolution is and has in it.
That's a, a good question on Commissioner Rader because that's one of the things I struggle with. What do we, we have to really define what's complete.
Exactly.
Because to some people, I submitted that that's complete.
Right.
You know, you know that's going to happen.
Exactly. Or a roofing company will submit the building permit, but they don't pay for it and they don't let the homeowner know that the other parts of those were not done. And so it just sits there incomplete for a very long time.
Yeah. And so I, I've always had that concern. So whatever we end up putting in place, I think it's imperative on us that we're very clear that this is what complete is. So if somebody calls us, we can, we can defend easily and say, well, did you have this as a this? Then you're not complete.
That's the key piece to all of this. Absolutely.
So who monitors the clock when it's running?
Well, currently we, we're in them daily, so we're just, we watch them and we process them. When they go back and forth electronically, they just continue to process all day long. Once Public Works is done with Aaron, it kicks it back over to our planning or building staff, whoever, whichever kind of permit it is. And they keep, continue to process it. So once it usually comes back, that's usually the last stop and then we issue.
Okay. So if an applicant has completed the application and you're agree, in agreement that it's completed, the clock starts?
Yeah. Once they, currently, once they submit, the clock has started, whether it's complete or not currently.
Okay.
And if this House bill or Commissioner Doll's resolution, whatever, that, we're going to have to change the way we consider complete or consider the application complete. We're going to need a lot more handholding at the counter to make sure their application is complete. So that clock starts and it starts when it's supposed to.
Okay.
Well, the one.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Pardon me. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that the one silver lining in this that I see is that it's going to give us an opportunity to evaluate our workflow and maybe some of the things that we do to provide better service on the front and on the back end to make sure that everything is complete. Everything, and before we, you know, we, the car, the, the clock stops, pardon me. But I think it's a good thing because it'll allow us the opportunity to evaluate what we're doing and what we can do better. Almost because we're, our hand's going to be forced to do it. And hopefully the resolution gives us a little bit of, of leeway and definition that Commissioner Doll is working on. But ultimately, I think that if we, if we approach this the right way, it's good, it, it's an opportunity to help us become more efficient.
I agree. We're always, and we always have room for improvement. So this is a good way to look at it.
I, I, I actually believe, I, I know we're having some issues because we have some employment issues, but I think we'll work through those and I think we'll get a process that'll keep us on track. I actually think it will show the public that actually we do, you do a darn good job.
We try and we work really well with Public Works. We're kind of hand in hand with all of this. So anything we can do, I would just, I would love to have that transportation plan complete. It would really help our comprehensive plan going forward. I just ask that maybe it get contracted out instead of done in-house just because I know of her, her workload is, she's just inundated. And it would help, then we can meet our timeline for next June. So our comp plan is June, June of 26. That would be fantastic.
Oh, it's due in June of 26, so you're a little over a year out.
Yes. And we started meeting last week. We did a kickoff meeting. So we're having them a couple of times a month.
Any of my seatmates see anything you want to tweak or you came with us working down this road and coming back with something more solid in a couple of weeks?
All right. Let's see a couple of these with the peach color that says waiting on developer response, but there's no, it says in the task status. There's nothing that says revision required or, I get, oh, maybe I should read, go to the next column over here on comments. Maybe I'll get educated.
So that's because I didn't add in the task status. So the list, I almost called her the wrong name. The list Tracy sent me, I did not touch the task status. And while I was developing the list, a couple of these were sent back, comments sent to the developer on certain dates. So that, that's why the revision, revisions required didn't show up in a number of these because the comments were sent while this was being developed.
As much as I like this whole layout, who's going to keep this list, list caught up to date?
So that is going to be the technician in the Public Works office is going to just, and this is just a Public Works list. So the technician that, our stormwater specialist does our single-family home development review. This is going to be a task added to her list that she's going to update this because she does all of the short plats. She does all the inter-agency reviews. She does all the single-family home permitting on the Public Works side. So the only thing she doesn't do are the larger developments that she will keep bird dogging me. And she's very good at coming into my office and going, Susan, when are you getting to that? That will be part of her. That will be part of her task, to keep me on the ones that need to be moved along, that she cannot handle. She will also be reviewing the easy SEPA's and developing those memos so that I'm not doing them anymore, which is part of what she does, the inter-agency reviews. And she brings me those memos, and I'll flip through the documents and go, okay, yeah, it looks like you covered everything, and just initial them. So she does the physical work, and I just do a quick five to 15-minute review.
Great.
Susan, is that process new? Are we just now starting that process with her?
So she has been doing the single-family homes and the inter-agency reviews. I'm going to be adding the SEPA's and adding her updating this list and being my conscious, conscience on the other items.
And you feel that that's gonna help with the backlog that we've got?
Yes, so currently, I have three that are on this list, 303 Hazel and 127 McGuire. I have a couple others that just, that I sent comments out to last week that have returned comments that I need to get back to, and that's, and there's four projects of that. So once we get the rest of these, these other projects on the top of the list addressed, everything will have been touched once, and hopefully, I know at least one of them, probably all four of the ones I sent comments, as long as they responded to all those comments, they will be off the list. So and hopefully, I can get the other three out, or four, because of the way they submitted it, out soon. If not this week, then next.
Well, I applaud your efforts. Thank you for trying to make things run more efficiently and more smoothly, and hopefully you can keep finding ways to make that happen.
That's my goal.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
Good.
We appreciate it. Couple weeks, you get to see an updated list, and we'll just move forward.
Sounds great.
Okay. Thanks, Susan. Anything else? 2:30, we have, we'll do a workshop. Everybody's good? Okay, we'll just recess till 2:30. How's that?
Okay, welcome back from recess. We're gonna, we have a couple items in the afternoon. We'll take care of District Court billing rates real quick. And then we were gonna have a more in-depth discussion on the Weldon Tax Increment Financing Plan. So Kathy, I'll turn it over to you and we'll take care of the first one first.
Okay, I think that I have a slideshow just in case. Okay, Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. And today I'm going to be presenting information on our district court billings. So the county entered into agreements with surrounding cities to provide district court services. And each participating city is billed for their, for the operational costs related to processing city cases, as well as a portion of security costs provided at the Hall of Justice. So the current cities that are under contract with us are City of Kalama, City of Rock, Castle Rock, City of Woodland, City of Longview, and City of Kelso. The contracts that are currently in place, some of them are fairly old. They date back to, one of them dates back to 1989. And so they're fairly long-range, long-run contracts. So this is a chart to show you the 2024 revenue compared to the caseloads. Because the billings are based upon caseloads. And so payments in 2024 totaled a little over $2.5 million. And it was split out between the cities that you see on the chart. And then we have the percentage of those totals. What, what the city paid as a percent of the grand total. But then the caseloads are the next column, the third column, which shows you, for example, the caseload for City of Castle Rock was 125 on a total of 20,585 caseloads. So there's a difference right now in the amount they've paid as a percentage versus the amount of caseload percentages. And in some cases, it's, it, well, I'll just take Castle Rock, for example. It's less than 1%, but their actual caseload is closer to 0.61%, almost, almost 1%. So there's a bit of discrepancy between the caseloads and the amount of billing that they're paying.
So the billing is a set amount, we negotiate a set amount, it's not by case?
It's a, it is by case.
So then what's it matter? If they're paying for every case that goes through?
The, the rate. And so I'm going to get into that in a minute. So, so the rate, right now, the rate that's been currently charged for infractions is $36.39. And then for criminal, it's $115.41 per case. These, some of these rates have not changed since 2021.
2021 is the last time you renegotiated with all the cities, or are we just looking at Cat's Rock?
All cities.
Okay.
But those rates are uniform across all the cities?
Yes, it's uniform across all cities. All cities are charged the same rate.
Okay.
Yep. At one point, they were different rates, and I think they went through and made them all the same rates.
All right.
And where are we at with comparable counties as far as that rate goes? Do we know?
I don't, I don't know. I don't think we have that information. It, it, the rates, if you were doing a true cost allocation, the rates would be based upon what does it cost the county in total expenses over the number of cases. But as you'll see in another chart, we're going to show you the caseloads fluctuate from year to year. So it's very uneven as far as the caseloads go. So, so they-
Trying to grasp though, if the same rate applies and it's a per-case basis, I'm, you're gonna have to tell me, or make me understand why the caseloads make a difference.
Yeah. What happened is, we have a cost to run the courts, but we are not recouping all of those costs. Because the rates were set fairly low, and I'll show you in a little bit.
Do, do we get any reimbursement from the state on, on any of this?
No.
State kick in anything on district?
Just for interpreter reimbursement and also trial court improvement funds is based on judge's salary. So, so those two things do come back to us. We, though, pass the interpreter reimbursement cost to the city. They get a portion of that already.
Okay.
Yep. And as far as rate comparisons, that's been quite a while since we've reached out to other courts to see how those are done. And basically, they were all over the map. That was pre-2020, last time we looked at it. But there's not really a consistent way to do it, as far as I've seen.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so this is, this is just a pie chart to show you that operating costs per, per particip, paid by participant, and then the total filings and the percentages. It was just another way to show that chart previously. But to show you that by far, the county assumes the majority of the expense. But yet, they, we're about 82% of all the cost. And, but we're actually only about 73% of the number of cases. So what we looked at was how, you know, what's the methods for allocating the cost for the district court? And in the files that I looked at, there were things like, keep the rates the same as the year before. So that had been done a couple of times. It's, it's, one of the things I noticed is that there wasn't a lot of consistency over the long period of these contracts. So these are some of the things that I noticed. Sometimes they kept the rates the same. I don't know what the logic was. Sometimes, they've never allocated based upon actual cost. So that's part of the reason why we have a discrepancy between number of cases and the actual cost. And then sometimes they increased it by CP, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index factor. And sometimes they actually increased it by the COLAs that were, that were in the personnel.
It's all over the board. Whatever the whim is, they make a decision. That's crazy.
Let's flip a coin and see what you want to do.
I don't, that's just crazy.
And then, like I said, the last time the rates have actually changed, they've been the same rate since 2021.
Kathy, are these annually renewable contracts, or are they, like, what's the term for them?
They're, these contracts don't have, they're open-ended. And what the contract calls for is a letter to be issued to the cities by October of the previous, the previous year, so that they will know what the rates are for the next year. So that's the one, one thing that's a constant, is that they're receiving a letter telling them what the rate's going to be for the next budget year.
So we need to issue that letter by October?
Can any of this verbiage be amended in these contracts?
Yes, that, that's actually what I'm here to talk about today, is to, to create a basis for our allocation that stays consistent and to amend all of the contracts and update them.
Are, are we working with the cities to make this happen?
We're, we're planning to, but I first wanted to bring it to the commissioners, so you're aware in case you heard anything about us meeting with the cities. Before we embark upon meeting with the cities, I wanted to bring it to the commissioners.
Okay. But because I think they need to be involved, and I think all of them,
Yep.
as a group, we need to decide on the, on where we're at and how each year is going to take. So when it comes to October, they know what's going to happen in their city, if it's-
Yeah. We actually-
Be a secret, or it's gonna be a-
Right. We actually have the data. It's actually a look back, because your caseloads, the data for the caseloads are available for 2024, and they just came out. So around March, April timeframe. So we'll, we've worked on what we propose for 2026 rates. So we kind of know those already, right now, what we're proposing.
So who gives you the data on the, on the costs?
Well, the, the cost is, we pulled the data from our expenditures, straight from our people's office.
I, I get that, but you're saying we're not covering our actual costs. So who gives us the-
Total cost.
The total cost is what we end up paying, and, and you're saying, based on-
It's not split up.
Bookings that, that we're subsidizing a little bit. Basically is what you're saying.
Yes. When we looked at it, we calculated for 2024. Because we had the rates frozen from 2021, we would have collected about $118,000 more in billings, had we been at least updating the billings for CPI.
Wow.
Are the caseloads trending upwards or downwards over the last four years?
Um, let's, the next slide.
I would say over the last four years, though, there was a big dip for COVID. And then they trended way up in 2023 with the drug possession law changes. And they've kind of stabilized since then.
Yeah.
And Steve, I didn't, I didn't realize, can you see what we're seeing?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, good. So as you can see, we've got- So as you can see, we've got, got a little historic, historical caseload numbers, and also our operating costs for the courts. And so the, the caseloads fluctuate in, from year to year. So two thousand twenty for infractions started out at a little over ten thousand, and for two thousand twenty, and then they went up, like Molly said, to fourteen thousand in twenty-three. And then in twenty-four, they kind of bumped back down to twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-eight. So they're fluctuating. The same thing for the criminal caseloads. And then we wanted to show that the rates, the billing rate, while the base year is twenty, that's the basis for our two thousand twenty-two billing rates because of not having all the information for the total cost and not having all the information for the number of caseloads until the next year. So, and we estimated what the infraction rate would be and the criminal. And these are the rates based upon total cost, our operating cost, and they're almost double what we actually are charging right now.
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna ask you how you arrived at those numbers.
So what, what you're asking from us is permission to negotiate with the cities and, and come, come back with contract language that makes it more consistent.
Consistent and predictable.
They'd be able to budge out and see what's going to happen down years instead of this, one year we're going to use this, one year we're going to do that.
Right.
Is that what you're asking from us?
Yeah. I'm asking to make sure that we, the next, I think, what we want to do is we're recommending to just use the CPI rate to increase their rates. So that way, they also have some predictability and-
What do we, which CPI do we use around here, like Portland?
No, what, what did we go grab? We use the, we use national CPI. We could use-
It could, because you can break them down in areas too.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Does the court system use a CPI for theirs, for their budgets?
Say, say that again, Steve?
Do the court systems use a CPI for their budgets?
No, you just give me an operating budget.
Yeah.
I I would think that for consistency, you could just take last year's operating costs minus any state and federal funding that comes in to support the system.
That's what we do.
Divide the total number of cases into that, and then take the number of cases from last year that were done for each city and plant those numbers and say, that's the cost for this next year. It might be above or below CPI, but it'd be a real number that would be based on last year's services. And everybody know, have an idea what they're looking at. And that would include CPI right into the calculation.
And if we did that, they would be looking at sixty-one dollars and seventy cents per infraction and two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents for a criminal rate, which is significantly higher than what they're currently paying. They're cur, like I said, they were currently paying thirty-six dollars and a hundred and fifteen.
And that's based on two thousand twenty-one?
That's based upon.
Agreement?
Yes, the, the old rates are based upon two thousand twenty-one.
Well, I can understand why they're so low if we haven't touched them in five years.
But we also never, I don't think they ever did the cost billing based upon total cost.
Well, maybe it's about time we start doing that.
So Kathy, what you're, what I'm understanding you say is, is that even if we double the rate, we're still subsidizing this by a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty dollars for a criminal estimated rate?
No, if, if we were to do the actual rates here, we wouldn't, the county would not be subsidizing anything.
It'd be actual cost per city, based on last year's numbers.
Based on last year's numbers.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that seem unfair?
Well.
It's just a huge dump in one, in one time period.
I don't think it's, it's, it's unfair in the sense that we all share equally in the cost. I struggle with, just like I would with any taxpayer, I struggle with the cities of hitting them with something this large all at one time, and I don't know exactly how to address that. But I, I know they struggle with their budgets too, as well as we look. So I don't know the solution to that. I, I'd be interested in your conversations with them and how they want to address that, because I, I think, I totally agree with Commissioner Farrell, and I think Commissioner Rader is probably the same. I think if we all just share the same cost, I think that's a goal. But I don't want to tell any of the cities that we're going to double you for the next year because they're all struggling with the same, same things. So I, I don't know if, as a group, you guys can kind of come up with a game plan to get us to the goal?
Yeah, I, I don't care if we make it a, a two-step process to get there, but I think, you know, fairness, that each organization using the facilities should be paying their own fair share. I don't, I don't want to see us subsidizing it. And one way or another, the money's coming out of taxpayers' dollars from, either from the county or from the city. They're, we're collecting them somewhere to pay the bills. So if we can get it back to, hey, this is how it works for everybody, and you're going to pay your fair share. If we can't get there, get everybody on board, maybe we've got to get halfway there with our October letter, and let's, let's talk to them between now and then. I don't want to surprise them with anything. I want them on board with, this is our thought process, this is where we're going to try and get to. How can you help us get there? So that's my goal.
That give you enough to work with?
We can do that. Yep.
You good with that, Steve?
I am. And Kathy, great, great job for looking into things like this where we can, you know, hopefully work together with the cities to, to help make up some of these deficits that we've got, although it might create deficits in other areas, it might, it sounds like, but at least we're, we're looking to do what we can, where we can.
Yeah. And, and my goal is always to, to have a rational cost allocation and to have something consistently prepared by our office each year and get it to them early enough so they can budget for it.
Yeah, and, and my goal would be to get there and say, this is our now and forever method of how we're going to calculate this. And I'm not planning on going off on some other wild coin flip to figure it out.
It, it, this, this, and I wasn't around during previous negotiation, but it reeks of, these were political decisions to benefit things over the way, and sooner or later, that comes and, and bites you back. And then somebody has to deal with it. What you have here is three people are willing to deal with it, so, so people down the road don't have to deal with it. But I, I will caution again, I'm just trying to be sensitive to the, to the cities. I think everybody needs to be on the same playing field, but we have to have, if it, if it takes a two-step or whatever it takes, let's at least get to agreement and, and get where we need to be.
Yeah. When we looked at this also, I went over this with Molly, but these are operating costs that we're looking at here. They don't even include any facility cost whatsoever. Because our facility costs are actually charged to Facilities Department. So if they were to have a court system, each of the cities on their own, they would be paying a lot more than just these operating costs.
And, and I'm okay with that, because things we do with the facilities, if we want to make changes over there, if, if we're expecting the cities to pay in that, then I think they have a right to say whether you're going to make changes or not, because it's going to affect them. It's, it's a facility, we built it, we have it there, this is what it's for. But the operation costs inside, I can, I can, I can gather that, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I guess, I kind of put aside that, is I could argue against that and say, if we build it and make the modifications, and then they're going to use it, I think they ought to be paying for part of the total cost, so.
That's true, it could go either way.
Yep. Okay, I have my marching orders. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay, I don't, I don't see anybody from Port. I was hoping that maybe their people that put this together would do that. I can preface this a little bit, I guess. We've been, we've been talking about this tax increment financing that the Port of Woodland wants to do, and we've talked a lot about how, how it works. And I think we're at the point as a, as a B O C C that we have to decide if we want to push against this, how we're going to push against it, and, and what it, just what we're going to do. If you're just going to sit back and let it go through, we know the consequences. It, it has, I've looked through some of their documentation. It's hard to under, Kathy's there, why don't you come up? Because if we lose, if you lose property tax, increasing property tax values, they don't see it as we losing anything. Their response to some of the things I've said is, you're not losing anything, you're just not gaining anything. So we're not taking anything from you. And I'm going, well, I'm not sure that's the definition I would use. I think they are, are taking. So if we don't have property tax, the other big bucket that the county operates on is tax receipts from sales tax. And to make up, I think Kathy pulled up, ten years ago, we've probably doubled in ten years the sales tax just from normal activity that comes into us. Well, at that rate, you're not going to make up what's being taken out or shifted elsewhere. You're just not going to make that up. I don't know how the finances work on that. It's just not going to work.
Right. Over a period of about ten years, our sales tax totally increased a little over seven million dollars. And so, yeah, it's, and it's very, it's, it's a small amount compared to the foregone property taxes.
Yeah.
Do we, do we not get anybody from the port in here?
No.
You gotta be kidding me. Okay.
So I, I don't know how far to go with this. I, I've looked at your numbers. I don't, no, they, they say a creation of five thousand jobs. I don't know that we've seen that over the past decade. Most of these industries, West Rock that came in, the corrugated pipe plant that went in Mid Valley, a lot of things are automated these days. They, they don't run it by bodies, they run it by technology. So I don't know, I, I struggle with that number. I'm not sure that's a true number. And they talk about eleven thousand F T Es working on this. I'm not sure about-
That's their, that's their construction, you know, number of construction people that they're estimating to have with over five thousand permanent jobs when they're fully developed. Yeah, I yeah, a lot of this looks to me like pie in the sky at a considerably good portion of it at our expense, at the county's expense.
I, uh, you know, I, I hate to sound I opine here, well, I gave them a chance to, to come up. You know, I, my career was, was banking, forty years, thirty-nine years in banking. And if I had a customer that came to me like this, they basically have no, what they've told us, they have no bonding power available to me. They've used all their bonding power.
Yeah.
They've more than just told me, they've told the other commissioners as well. Well, that means their lender has said, you're at your max. We're not, we're not going to do anything more for you. So now they're looking for the other credit card to get themselves on the surface to get themselves out of a fix. They think they'll be able to fix it with this other credit card that takes from the different entities. It takes from county a large sum, it takes from City Woodland, it takes from fire. It also takes from the library down there, it takes from Dyking Districts. It's, it, it takes some from a lot of people. And I don't, I can't get past the concept that you can just unilaterally, with a vote of three people, take from all your partners in the county. It just, I wouldn't do that as a person, and I wouldn't expect business to do that as a business. So that's my biggest struggle. We do have Calis Fire here, and they had some, do you mind talking a little bit? Because I know you've studied this quite a bit, and he had some points also that I thought were good when we were just talking before. It affects other entities that are not even, not in a money-wise, but extended service for the sheriff, for example, those type of things.
Thank you for, for having me today. My name's John Norm, the-
Push that a little.
On there, there we go. Thank you, thank you. Uh, thank you for having me today. My name's John Norm, the Fire Chief for Clark Calis Fire Rescue. Clark House Fire Rescue provides fire and emergency services to a hundred and twenty-five square miles in southwest Calis County and northwest Clark County. Uh, we have the unfortunate distinction of being one of, uh, the agency's most hard-hit by TIF so far in the state, as there are two TIF areas placed upon us, one by the Port of Ridgefield and one by the Port, or, excuse me, the City of Ridgefield. Now there is a proposed tax increment financing area in the Port of Woodland that would place five thousand two hundred acres of land in a TIF area for the next twenty-five years that would freeze the values at the, the base year. And all of our future tax revenue would be based on that frozen value for twenty-five years. However, any of that development, if realized, will require fire and emergency response services. It will require law enforcement services, it will require mental health, it will require jail services, it will require road services, and all of the things that you traditionally see as being provided by local government. However, the revenue that comes with that development is all going to go to the TIF, and we will be forced to serve that area with existing revenue. And it creates one of two things. Everybody else's service level goes down because we don't have the money, or it pushes the tax burden to everyone outside the TIF to have to pay to keep a service level in the TIF area. Uh, I've had the, uh, the unfortunate pleasure of testifying against this at the Washington Legislature last year and trying to get people to understand it. And sir, it is the same thing that we hear from the other entities, which I think is their talking point, is you don't lose anything, you just don't realize the gains. But in fact, you do realize all of the work that comes with it. So all of the entities that work for the county that provide some form of service in there are going to have to provide a higher-level service, no money to do so.
Yeah, any, any new equipment, any new supplies, any new materials for roads, labor costs, those are not going to be frozen. Those are going to continue to increase at everybody else's expense. While the port is obviously going to be real happy with all the money they're taking away from other people. The idea that they're not taking money away that we're going to be fine because we're frozen at that base rate for twenty-five years is a ludicrous claim. I, I did, I can't, I understand how it's a pie in the sky, it looks great, and it's all rainbows for them. But I do not grasp how they can be ignorant of the fact of what all these other agencies are going to lose. That's, that they're turning a blind eye to that, to their benefit and our cost.
I think, sir, it's a, it's a, honestly, and excuse my coarse language, but they're hoodwinking the, the taxpayer. Because they're going forward and saying, hey, this isn't costing the taxpayer anything. Right? We're going to do this, and we're going to bring all of these great things in here, and the taxpayers won't be paying any more- Right, we're going to do this and we're going to bring all of these great things in here and the taxpayers won't be paying any more for this. So that's a great thing, but in fact. Uh, the taxpayers will pay more, they just have to pay more to other entities to cover the area. Or in fact, the taxpayer has a service level that decreases in all of those other entities that provide, whether it be libraries, fires. Roads, parks, every place else that relies on that to serve the growth.
Correct.
I've. Talked to legal counsel, they gave me a referral to. Firm they use their suggestion, first suggestion. To me was that. The B O C C, the three of us, set up a meeting with the Treasury. And just voice some of our our concerns, our opinions. And if. And just see where it goes.
Yeah, I I feel very strongly that if we're all in agreement that the three of us need to take. A unified position against this. Officially, publicly and and state that we're against it and we're going to oppose it to the best of our ability to protect the citizens of Callis County.
Sir, if I could uh, make one point, the uh, the state law on tax increment financing requires that if. The. Value of the TIF area exceeds twenty percent of the value of the existing fire department. Uh, that they must have a mitigation plan and the Woodland TIF area is split. It, part of it is in Callis County Fire District One and part of it is in Clark Callis Fire Rescue. And so it does exceed twenty percent of C C F D one's area. But. It would appear to be that there's not going to be any money to mitigate if all the monies go into projects and and. I would offer that the best person to determine. What a fire department needs is probably the fire chief and the best term person to determine what a law enforcement agency needs is probably the law enforcement chief. And so I I don't find it comforting that a port district's going to tell a fire district. Here's what you're going to get. And in fact, an example I'll use is the Port of Ridgefield that said. We're going to mitigate the impact to you in this other area of our fire district by putting a floating public safety dock. Well, I don't necessarily need a floating public safety dock, what I need is a fire engine and a particular fire station to serve the citizens somewhere else, so. It it's difficult to be told what your mitigation is going to be. In some of those.
That's a. My opinion is we need to oppose this. I'm hearing the same from Commissioner Farrell, Commissioner Rader, are you?
Yeah, there's there's just, there's too many things that. That I have a problem with and I'm not even saying I'm opposed to TIFs in certain aspects, but. I I just, outside of the financial side of it, I just look at the the infrastructure part of it. You know, you can have this great, huge, beautiful thing on one side of the river, but if you got an old rickety wooden bridge that everybody's got to get across to get to this great thing. You're going to have a huge backup and then people are going to say this isn't so great after all. And I think that there are more important issues in woodland that need to be addressed. Than that five thousand acres on the port, just, I mean, like I I've said before, if you take. Take the CEO of one of those companies. Off of the freeway at two thirty in the afternoon to get back to that area at the port and he's probably going to rethink bringing his business there. And so I think there's just, there's too many things with it that I don't see that are. I don't want to say well thought out, but just very short sighted. And I think that in in the long term, I don't think it's going to be as good as as they say. Primarily, when we look at the projected figures that were in that prospectus that we got. How did they come up with those? You know, I I look at that as garbage in, garbage out, you know, when it comes to computers and the building models and that type of stuff. And we can project all day long, but if the numbers that we're putting into that projection are accurate. In a TIF, we're still, we're tied to it for twenty five years, whether it was right, wrong or indifferent. And I I just feel like. I feel like it could be done better than it has been, that it than it has been done, and I feel like it could be presented. Uh, in a different manner than it's been presented. So that the taxpayers have somewhat of a say in whether or not they agree with what's going on. To your point, Chairman, about having three people decide for twenty five years, this is what it's going to be. So I'm on board with you guys.
Let me ask you, if if the clerk, if we were able to set up a meeting up at the Treasury. Would. We'd be able to talk you into joining us?
Yes, and I could actually bring you some real world examples of of some things that have happened on the uh, on the Clark County side specific. Specifically, if you've seen a Costco near Ridgefield. And we have some real shiny examples of the of what went on there and and how much of our. Of revenue that should come to us for responding there, which we've responded several times there so far. Uh, it's all gone into the TIF area there at the. The TIF located at the junction of Ridgefield.
I think we got a direction.
I do too. I wonder, I'd like to talk to the. Sheriff and the the different people affected by this and see how many other people we can get on board with this and. Go to, go visit the treasurer of the state.
Well, that that's a good point, why don't we? We can reach out to the to the sheriff. I'll actually reach out to, I talked to the attorney for the Dyking districts and and maybe, I mean, we might have a. Pretty solid group going up that. That that would have some good information for for the treasurer. So why don't we work on that and time is probably a little bit of the essence, so I'll ask the. The clerk and and we'll start working on that, see if we can make it a date work for everyone. What I would ask is contact information. To the clerk.
I think the public hearing that with the Port of Woodlands having is next week.
I know they have two meetings that are. The date I've heard and and. You'd have to verify that it's still in place was they were going to make a decision on their April seventeenth. So I think it. We need to have some, we need to make some contact before that and I'll be at their meeting tomorrow. They probably won't like seeing me there, but I'll be at their meeting tomorrow. And if they. And I'll be honest with them, if they ask what we're doing, I'll tell them this is what we're going to do.
Sir, Clark House Fire Rescue Nick is hosting a community forum next Monday, the twenty fourth at six P M. At our Ridgefield Fire Station, I've invited all of the fire district chiefs from Callis County as well as from Clark County. Cities, the city fire chiefs wouldn't have as much input on on things of that nature, but. And other community members from the library district and some others to come in and. Try to get the word out how this fully. Impacts junior as well as senior taxing districts that that will lose millions of dollars in these.
I I'm glad you brought that up. I'm I'm a. Already have a commitment for that evening, but I'd I'd love one of the other commissioners to pick up and be part of this meeting.
When is it?
It is Monday, the twenty fourth at six P M.
Where's it at? It's in Ridgefield?
It's Ridgefield, there's a our headquarters fire station located just off the Ridgefield Junction.
I'll be there.
I will, I'll get contact information for you and and send you the invite. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I see we, Ron, did you want to have something you wanted to add to?
And the model for Callis County is that. You are a service base for Callis County. And it isn't just. Fire service or whatever, you have building permits, you have all of those functions that you service. So this entity is in essence creating a semi quasi. Private enterprise, just like I working at Warehouser for thirty nine years in engineering. I had building permits through the county to do, I worked on fire systems, et cetera, and those were. Integrated services through the county and so we paid for those services. So if this quasi. Tax district is not providing the funds needed for their expectation for services. For instance, they build a building down there that is six or eight stories high. The fire department has to have ladder trucks and different things to get in. So you need to have a model of some sort that says of the taxing districts, what form of model are we trying to create here? And how are the services provided for that entity? And what are their expectations for? Time for fire trucks to deliver if they've not contributed to the roads and the things around that. There's no way in heck that you can meet the service expectations to that entity. So I'm saying they're not. Just a port district with doing this, they are a quasi private enterprise that needs to be treated in that perspective.
Thank you.
Very Bartel, a commissioner with Clark Callis Fire Rescue. Everything the chief said is true, we testified at the legislative session. And I, my biggest concern or a big concern I have is the law itself. We had an EMS levy, I think it was two years ago, over nine thousand people voted in support, sixty two percent. They want the money spent on maintaining and improving fire service. As few as two fire commissioners, the Port of Ridgefield or the Port of Woodland. Through all those votes out and said, no, we're going to spend it this way. City Ridgefield, five people threw it out, said, no, we're going to spend it this way. The law is fundamentally wrong. It takes the will of the people and it puts it in the hands of a very small group.
That's an excellent point and and one we need to work with our. Legislative body on too, they, I I. It's amazing to me that they didn't see that and they just pass this thing.
They saw it, it would not, it never got out of committee. All the committee was in favor of moving, we were proposing changes, favor of moving it out, the chair said no. The chair is the one that was very heavily involved in writing the bill. So it, and even other legislators got up and said, yeah, we made a mistake, it's time to correct this. They don't even like to talk about it at the legislative session here, they say that's just a subject we're staying away from. Now the facts are coming in, what it's really costing, what it's meaning. And we're getting ready with some data now that the chief said, we've got a lot of data now that's starting to show. We said this was going to happen, it's now happening. Thank you for your time.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, well, I I appreciate those that participated, we did reach out and we did invite. Uh, because I'm not opposed to the opposite view, right, certainly. We've never been opposed to the opposite view here, but. Uh, I think we have a direction, we know what we're going and we'll work on what we talked about today. And move forward, see if we can corral this thing before it it hurts all these different districts.
Do we need to, do you need a motion or something to put officially that we're all on board, we're moving the same direction as a council or?
We can do that if you want it in a motion, sure.
I didn't write anything up. I would make a motion that this counts, this board of commission be on board as opposed to this. TIF program from the Port of Woodland as it stands.
Motion on the floor to oppose this TIF proposal as it stands at this point in time. That sound good, Steve?
Yeah, I have a question for the the fire chief real quick. With with the given infrastructure that we have currently. Uh, chief, with the roads, the way that they are in woodland, with those eleven thousand new jobs or five thousand new jobs. Uh, as as I created back there, if there was a fire. How do you see that as a problem for you guys to be able to get back there? Given the way things are right now, if the freeways exits and on ramps are left the way that they are?
Yes, there are certain hours of the day that it would create considerable problem for us. Uh, we have a staffed fire station in woodland. That has three or four firefighters on duty twenty four hours a day and then their backup. So they handle first what we call a a single unit call, like a EMS call that's not very serious. Minor car crash, car fire, something like that. But when you have anything that requires a multi unit response. Their help has to come from the freeway and it comes from our stations farther south or occasionally. We get our help from Callis County Fire District One, uh, which is an all volunteer department and during the weekdays, it's hard for them to turn out. Uh, firefighters because a lot of them are at work or elsewhere. Uh, so there are hours of the day, usually begins around two P M and lasts till six or seven P M depending on the day. Uh, that we can't get off at exit twenty one. Uh, and then we have to go up to exit twenty two, but many people are thinking that way too. And and so, yes, anything that that that. Drives. A lot more call volume in the bottoms without a corresponding way of fixing. The road system to get there will generate problems for us. Currently does.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, those in favor? Okay, passes. We will. Proceed that way then. Anything else? Okay, appreciate everybody's time today. Thank you very much.